For the record, this is the Stark County Council meeting November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. We are present in form. And we will follow the agenda as advertised, starting with Mister Anderson.
You don't have anything to sign?
Oh, yeah. My name's Aaron, and I'm the Assistant Chief with Hamilton Fire Department in Davis Township. I'm coming to the council tonight to seek additional funds for communications for the department. We've over the, over all the courses of the years, we've had different radios and different systems that have been installed. And the last upgrade that we did, once we went to the eight hundred megahertz radio system, we had a bunch of radios that were not programmable. So we ended up buying some of our own out of our fund. But we ended up finding that, you know, several of them could be repaired. So J K told us that couldn't be repaired. So we ended up getting those repaired, so we have additional for additional radios for additional members to operate our operations within our department. We'd like to seek additional funding so we can outfit the last few officers with dual band radios. And then also upgrade some of our trucks with additional communication devices like via tablets, just like the EMS has. So when we get dispatched out, when we get to the station, our call is on our screen, waiting for us to go in route. And then essentially the mapping software will guide us to help guide us to the call. It'll help, it'll help greatly expedite our response scenes. And having that. We're projecting right around ten thousand dollars in additional revenue. The council had given us five thousand dollars a while back. I guess they approved it from the ARPA money. It went across the board for most of the department, they got five thousand. But from my understanding, like Coons Lake got some additional money for sign or something along those lines. So I guess that's why I'm here to see if there is any additional funds available for communications. We would appreciate the additional funds to fulfill our obligation.
Mike, when have we started to get any of the receipt, any of the money in from mammoth? Did they send us a check yet?
Nope. Somebody asked me that question the other day and I checked with the girls and we haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay, we need to reach out.
You don't recall anything since I asked, do you?
We're in Q four. It's time to knock on their door again. If the council doesn't mind, if the council doesn't mind, I'll remind them about it unless somebody else wants to.
How many extra money are you looking for, Aaron? Uh, ten thousand dollars.
And you said we talked about five from ARPA. Originally, uh, the department's five, but then we gave fifteen to it's like Coons Lake and then we gave two fifty to the firehouse, but yeah, it was for the sign, yeah.
Are there monies available through our, our edit money that could be used for something like that? Because to me, that is developing economically in the county to, to use those funds for that.
Would that be possible? Cedar would make sense also. It well, no, but yeah, no, I totally agree though. That would make sense. I mean, we, we had a pretty decent amount in Cedar's. And we haven't been defending it. That's where, yeah, that's where you took the side.
I certainly wouldn't have any problem. And I, when the time comes, I'd be glad to make the motion. But I, I think, I think that's not unreasonable.
Yeah, I think when the case of the seed, if we wanted to make a motion ourselves, it'd be like a recommendation to the commissioners then to approve that if they.
Well, that's what we need to do.
Yeah. The ARPA funds are dedicated. We had to dedicate this year, spend by twenty six, but they're already done.
So we got that all straightened out.
Well, I did that report, so hopefully it is. That's I wasn't here for the beginning of it. I.
It's as close as close can be right now, but yeah, there isn't any extra. Put it that way, basically, yeah. A motion to recommend to the commissioners then that take it from Cedar?
Well, I'm gonna like, oh, dual bands. Okay. Probably two extra dual band radios. We purchased two dual bands that we, that we have now. Right. That way officers can have them in key roles when they're operating on fire ground.
I understand.
And then we're gonna outfit our primary engines, the two engines squad, and then our rescue truck with tablets that will have our active manual system on it that will dispatch dispatches us. It will pop up our call.
Our tablets were the chalkboard.
Yeah. And we had that. So yeah. So at least you're saying I'm younger than Todd, so that's an idea to say. Um, the only thing is Bruce, or either one of you were gonna make a motion, since it's we're a dedicated program, I don't know if you wanna say up to ten thousand, because maybe we'll have to have some kind of proof from Aaron as a follow up, like what was it spent on? I don't know.
You're asking, suggesting that we go with a motion uh, to ask the commissioners for uh, up to ten thousand dollars? Is that what you're saying?
I think that would make the most sense.
If that works, that's, that'll be my motion, I'm gonna tell you.
Have a motion from Bruce. Is there a second? Second from Tony? Um, I, I think Howard, you said Howard had discussion or.
No, that's all I wanted to know is, is how many and I understand now they're for the trucks. I'm good.
Is there any further discussion? I think you're on fireboard too, aren't you? That's what I say. That's why I saw you talk here. I needed, I thought that was why.
I'm longer the Hamilton Town Attorney, so I don't need to abstain.
So you can vote. Okay, all those in favor, aye. Is there any opposed? All in favor.
I understand. Sorry, sorry, couldn't have been.
I do.
You're not used to it.
Not, but.
Everybody on this board.
Gotta take care of our citizens.
Our annual report I wanted to share with you guys and to.
Please do.
A friend of Tim. Uh, thank you for the continued support of our presentation. Um, our program reporting here is September first through August thirty first, so the information in here is from September twenty, uh, September twenty twenty three through August twenty twenty four. Talks about some of the different programs we've done with youth throughout this um, area in the state. Um, our ag and natural resources, Bill Woolery and his horticultural programs he's done. And also our health and human sciences that we've done throughout the county. And then Plaski also that has a lot of our highlights from this past year. I just wanted to share with you guys what we've done this past year.
Can I bring something up real quick about four H by itself? We had a meeting recently. I think Connie Nineinger might have brought that up, that one county with their solar money sponsored four H participants. I thought that was a great idea.
Like the, the program fee, the fifteen dollar program fee?
Must have been that, I guess, but I don't know. Spelling that out there, that might be something to look on our list as we develop a list for.
Yeah, because that White County paid for the entire fifth grade to join for it.
Entireth grade, okay, that's right, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, we've continued for years in a row that we've had an increase every year. Uh, this year was three percent, last year was eight, so we're glad that we're continuing to end the number of projects as you saw with the having to, um, tense the fair, so many animals more than we have, so.
And great, absolutely.
Lot to, lot to do with our volunteers. They do a lot of time into it.
Maybe you could look into making a proposal to us for that.
Okay, yes, we can do that. Yeah, there's a new program I've started this year with third, fourth and fifth graders at North Johnson called Discovery Challenge. And they're doing research and they give them a presentation. We meet fact times, so that's something new we're doing.
I'd like to see some more dog participants.
Yeah.
Be fun.
Yes, so if you guys ever have any questions, please feel free to call us or email us at the office. We just appreciate, appreciate your support.
Thank you. April.
Hi, April has additional fan transfer.
And she has a discussion about the fundraiser and you know what? I meant to ask Justin, but before this meeting to, so we could talk about this. And it doesn't have to be the one that I did, but remember I, I wrote a fundraiser policy some time back. Do you think that we'd need to work on getting a policy in place for fundraisers? I'm there.
Wow, wasn't that something the State Board of Accounts noted?
Yes, they did. They asked us about having a policy in place.
I spoke to the State Board of Accounts about the fundraiser.
Yeah.
Um, before I talked to the commissioners or anybody, I know there's not a national policy in place, but.
Glad you, at least for you, at least for that, I think that gets the party started. I mean, for the council to be compliant and commissioners. I think we do need to get that, because we've been caught on it before. We haven't had any fundraisers.
We didn't have one ever.
We had fundraisers and then they came, oh, a policy. I'm sorry. We did not have a policy. I put one in draft. It's been a few years back, but I'd be, I think Justin might have it. I don't know if we could recirculate it and possibly add to that or write a new one.
The golf funding is the one where I made sure we got commissioners from commissioner, commissioners from the commissioners talking, and I made sure I helped them figure out the way you're supposed to deposit money, just everything right away. Yeah, there are some rules to follow and we gotta do.
I've got the, the rules from the State Board of Accounts as to how the, how to handle the accounting and the problem with the fundraisers in the past was basically a lack of keeping track of, you know, transactions and money in and out, money out.
We drafted that with the state guidance, but it's as clear as mud even with there, because they have a, they have to have a fundraising policy too, because their departments also. The state departments also.
Dave, I would like to say something because I don't think it's ever brought out, because he's not that kind of guy, but because of the issues we had, if I'm not mistaken, I think Sheriff Ropesa did be paying for all the food and everything out of your own pocket for that. He did. He's done that quite a bit because we, it is such a touchy thing and not trying to be a state woman.
It would be better.
We've done that in the past. So the fundraiser, just since we're on it. Um, ultimately, the problem is with our canine fund, we're down to under eight hundred dollars at this point with the bill that I just put in now. Um, I know there's been talk, people keep asking me where our dogs are, but we're up to four. So we were donated a couple of dogs with the trainings and stuff. Um, we haven't lost any dogs, but our funds are going because of the training, the food, the equipment that we've needed. Um, we just spent a huge chunk on, um, we got a bomb dog that was donated once we sent our officer to pass for it. Which is good, like with schools and everything. I mean, he's more social than, you know, kind of mean dog. Um, so we really just need some canine funds. Um, we did talk to State Board of Accounts, talked to the commissioners. They approved a T-shirt sale. The problem is we're under about eight hundred dollars and the canine fund is of today. So the reason that I was coming to you guys is because they said I had to come and ask you if we could use funds from maybe our like tech narco fund or from even from commissary um, on re, to just front like a T-shirt sale and then reimburse those back. So, yeah, yeah, because we don't have, we don't even have that in that fund right now, so. That's, that's where we're at with that. The canine officers are all willing to do it. They're pulling some quotes because the sheriff vetoed the one that they did find. Um, so, um, yeah, we need, I mean, they're great quality shirts, but you're talking sixty eight hundred dollars or something in terms, and we're not there, so.
Not unless you get to pay fifty bucks a piece or something.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's their profit in the shirt, but I mean, if we're putting money out of, if it was, we're taking money out of the canine fund and we're looking at a longer turnaround process, that would be one thing and I could, you know, I think Bruce and I both be a little more willing to go with that, but when we're having to take money out of somewhere else just to fund this. We want quick turnaround and T-shirt sales have gone crazy in the past for them, so. Um, we just need permission to take the funding from somewhere else to.
So, so starting with, starting with commissary, I think canines will qualify under commissary too, I, I believe.
The State Board of Accounts said that I would have to get permission from you guys to do that.
You mentioned commissary.
Yeah, I'll give some specifically in the email. I'm gonna forward that if you'd like, so.
That's why.
Yeah, so there's twenty and one, number five. Number five has canines, I believe, in it. I didn't bring that list. I don't know. I was actually talking to State Board of Accounts and stuff. So, um, but there is canines are in there and there is number nine is anything approved by the council and, and the county. So if you guys would be willing to at least let us do that, we're gonna keep the amount low. Um, and I, what I told the guys is even if we start small and then once you guys can fund your own fundraiser, then that's different, but and so we just need approval.
Do we have to approve it up to an amount? Um, I mean, wouldn't that be the right thing to do? I, I don't know.
Probably would hurt, so it's for the record.
Yeah, I, I don't.
We were talking about half, half of whatever.
We talked about thirty, no more than thirty five hundred is the conversation that we talked about, but we're trying to get it a little bit.
That being said, I will make a motion that we use the commissary money for the funding, original seed money for T-shirts and whatever's needed for the fundraiser for thirty five hundred dollars with the stipulation that the money will be put back in.
I'll second that.
Have a motion this second. Is there any discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All in favor.
Thank you, thank you.
And then you wanted to.
Um, I have a couple of transfers. Um, I would like to move, um, we've done really well, I think, with our automotive budgets. Um, I'd like to move six thousand dollars from tires and tubes to allowance for canine handlers. We have more canine handlers than we were budgeted for. Um, so that one needs your permission. That's in one thousand fund. Did you guys get a copy?
No, I don't have a copy.
I, I emailed them.
Yeah, we gotta buy an email.
Okay, um, and then also in the one thousand.
Okay.
I would like to, um, move twenty four hundred dollars from laundry and cleaning to computer contracts. Um, that just gets us back in the green with those cat, with that category. Um, and then those are my only two transfers. I'll have more in December, but if you wanna talk about transfers first, or you want me to talk about additional appropriations as well?
Why don't we do the transfers first and just separate it? Does anybody have any discussion about those transfers?
You wanna see them?
The, uh, additional portion of it is on the first page, second part of the box. Oh, sorry, you've got.
If you wanna pass those down. Uh, Councilman Bennett ends up with them last, then he could make it, if you want.
They're sending them your way.
That way you have the son numbers.
Oh. And that's for my first one.
Did you guys not get the email that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got them.
Just been, I've been saving paper.
That's what we've been trying, because I have not.
Just emailed a fucking thing like that, piece of paper.
Wow.
That's what they submitted.
Yeah.
In our December meeting, we have to discuss what we're gonna do about our tablets too. When do we move and reinstate those in twenty five?
I see who. No, he sits like that on grass if you want to. Make the motion to transfer.
I didn't type that. You're asking me to make this one?
It was true, because they're.
Well, okay, I would ask that we transfer twenty four hundred dollars. From account one zero 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 three oh four oh four zero 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 five. Computer contract two.
No, I think you're going backwards.
I am?
Yes, it's sort of reduction with me deploying, so you're wanting.
They should be your groups.
So just reverse it. We wanted, we want to put it in that account from account number one oh 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 two oh two oh eight oh 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 oh. Oh, oh, twenty seven, laundry and cleaning, twenty four hundred dollars. Why don't you do that? That was the first motion.
Okay, you're gonna do.
If you're helping, then we can just. Yeah, yeah. But listen, just, just to listen, okay? Okay, so we're gonna transfer six thousand dollars from account number one oh 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 two one two oh 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 five tires and two two, account number one oh oh oh, one one eight two five oh 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 five for, for canine handlers, six thousand dollars. That, that was my motion.
We have a motion this second, Tony? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All in favor.
Those are the state required fund numbers and we learned at our meeting, they're gonna be changing again and they're probably gonna be.
Shouldn't have to read all.
Oh, no, you don't. But we're gonna change that. And then you had an additional.
Additional appropriations. I was still working on my budgets. So McLean made these up for me quick, um, beginning of October. They're different now, but we're gonna go with this for now. Um, longevity on the jail, this is not a fund that we use, so we don't need that thousand dollars. Um, so what we have, this is all in the jail seated. Um, do I need to read all these numbers? Overtime, the sheriff, I'm sorry, that's the thousand we don't need. So for longevity for the jail, a thousand dollars, overtime in the jail, thirty thousand dollars. Gas, oil and lube in the jail, fifteen thousand dollars, service contracts, fifteen thousand dollars. Cat system in the jail was twenty five thousand. We could lower that to, um, like twenty four. And then vehicle patrol car for the jail is forty five, but you guys approved that at the beginning of the year. Um, that was all when we, Bruce came and talked to you at the beginning of the year about purchasing new, um, new patrol cars, he's forty five thousand out of seated. But for some rea, yeah, I remember we got the two new cars like at the beginning. So so I guess maybe it wasn't advertised, I don't know, but it's not on the budget at a negative forty five thousand, so.
It's on your budget. It's in the jail seated as a negative forty five when.
Yeah. It was your O two seven part of that, so.
I thought we did a cube cap.
That, that was before my time.
Was one out of cube cap and one out of secret.
Yeah, maybe.
Do you remember Rachel?
I didn't see Rachel.
They'll see it did so, it did need to be advertised and it wasn't.
Yeah, but it should have came out of, didn't we do one out of each?
It should be in the meeting minutes.
Yeah, we have to that look back to me.
You, you did get two cars though, didn't you, Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you must, you must have gotten one, the wonder angle out of cube cap and one out of.
I don't, I don't remember. It just like popped up on our budget.
I think.
On our, when I print our budget, it's off here at forty five thousand. She had added it on this for you guys, so.
Especially if it's missing and the other one's not, that tells me the one came out of one, one came out of the other.
So we don't need that overtime and we could drop this, um. I could drop this by two thousand dollars. We don't need the overtime for the sheriff because we don't use that line item. And then, um, the CAD system for the jail, if I have I wanna say it's twenty three five, I grabbed it on paper. Um, so if we had twenty four, I know that that would bring that to the in the green. That's one that we talked about during the budget workshop, so.
So you're saying you only need twenty four thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we also have an operator for all that in twenty five.
Yes, yes. Um, and I'm gonna, I mean, very honestly, I'm gonna come back to you in December because some of these don't cut. Like we need more money for gas, oil and lube. We need more in these. This is just.
Rather than doing two additional appropriations and we already have the money in the account, why wouldn't we just do all of it in December?
Yeah.
If, I'm fine with that. They just, this was already on the agenda, so here we go.
Were the other car.
How does everybody else feel? Because we'll also know where we're at for the all the other accounts in December for the year too, because.
I think that's really good.
My one thousand.
The other, the other may find some, some accounts that are heavy throughout our budget, we might be able to transfer some of that around from other budgets.
As long as there's no problem with me spending out of them in the meantime.
Problem is, I have to have everything to the paper by Monday for the last meeting, up for your last meeting.
Mine are done, except for the one question that I asked you about this morning. And then I will have everything for all three of my big budgets to you tomorrow, as soon as I get answer about the jailers.
So for the meeting we have in December, you have to have it with the first month in, in December?
I have to have it the Monday, because it has to be advertised ten days ahead of time. And then it has to be at the paper a week before that, and because Thursday and Friday are holidays and they're closed, they want it on Monday.
Because next.
Which is one week from today.
The twenty fifth, yeah.
But we can wait on this, as long as I can keep paying the bills in the meantime, because I can, I can easily turn into you by Wednesday. If, once I get the answer about the jailers thing I emailed you this morning, I can have all of my, I mean, I have totals for the year, like I'm a little I keep my, I've estimated out everything for the year, so I have no problem with that as long as I can keep paying bills, so.
I just hate having to count them, but I've been, State Board of Accounts is upstairs every single day.
These are, these are, I mean, very honestly, besides the CAD system and the vehicle patrol car, all of these other things are gonna stay in the red even with these approved amounts.
That's what's got me concerned is we're, we're taking action, we're still underwater, like that, that's not, that's not good business practice though.
No, these three, if we approve, even if you guys approve these three, these three accounts are gonna stay in the red even with these amounts added, which is lower, but I have to ask.
How do we make a good, a sound estimate just to figure out what we need to ask for now? Like, why is it so hard to?
Well, I, I can't because, I can't because it's gotta be advertised in the paper before I do that. And, um, because, well, very honestly, right now, all I'm waiting on is I emailed, I emailed this morning in the jail seated fund, I look to be finishing the year with about sixty four thousand over, right? In jailers, just in the jailers line item, but in the four nine one nine account, I am fifty thousand dollars in the hole.
So.
So if I can move some of those, then I. I will only, like, if I can combine those or we can move those, or, so that's what I have to work through to figure that out.
You can't move from fund to fund without an ordinance.
Right, so, so that's where we're at, so I have to ask you for fifty thousand dollars, but then instead of asking you for more money and seat it. I can just transfer some of that money around the transfer, so that's why, cuz I don't wanna come and ask you for more money than I need. So I can shoot out ballpark numbers, but where I'm gonna be way over, if I give you something now, I'd rather.
I, I'm just saying, if we're not gonna clear them all, if most of them are still in the. Cuz I'm only one person here and, and there's, you know, there, there's seven of us. Um, I'm just thinking that if most of them are still gonna be in the red. It just makes sense to, if she's gonna get it to you in time to advertise with the new amounts. In time to advertise for our next meeting, it still makes more sense. I'm with you on the red thing. But, but they don't look at you about how much you're in the red, just that you're in the red, you know, and I just, if we're not gonna correct it, I just don't know. I don't know, but I'm only one, what do you guys think?
I mean, it's already advertised, it's all ready to go, I don't.
We're gonna have to do it again though anyways. So I, I don't know, it's.
Two additionals.
I don't know if we're paying anything by doing. I don't think it really makes any difference, right, because we have to do it again anyways, so. It would make it less painful.
We'll get two in the green and we'll have three still in the red and a question about the vehicles if we do it now.
Till it's public, publicized.
Come out of uh.
For this meeting.
For what?
The jail project.
For the sake of accuracy though, I, I think we should wait, I mean, you're gonna be, you're gonna be a lot more accurate with your numbers.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be accurate with my numbers.
Numbers are accurate for right now, she's not over.
I am over, I am over, as a matter of fact, in gas, oil and lube, I think right now I'm like fifty seven thousand dollars total in the hole.
Well, that's what I mean.
Fifteen at it, but I'm still.
Have to ask for more money, not less money, is what I'm saying.
Oh yeah, this is definitely not putting us over in these.
But do, do, do we know, do we know for a fact? The advertisement for that car perceived is the way we voted. Because I thought we took one out of king cap and one out of seated.
Well, that's, this one's out seated.
So was, was the other car?
Oh, the forty five thousand was two car?
Well, that's what it was, forty five thousand was two cars.
We paid for it all on CD.
That doesn't matter, I guess, but I guess to Michaeline's point and. It sounds to me like the auditor's making a request. I think when the auditor makes a request, it's valid to consider that, because either way, we start the same thing, so if somebody would like to make a motion. To settle this for now, it's uh. I'll, I'll take this real quick. Was this at?
No, no. For the eighteenth. For appropriations, that's what we're talking about, right? This is the public hearing, so this is where we should be allowed to make.
So you're right, we'll open the public hearing then and then we'll take your um, discussion first.
Okay, so um, first of all, thank you for taking my, my question. So I actually came across tonight's public hearing by cabinet stance. When I was looking for the details about tomorrow's public hearing in the paper. Um, during the process, I did uncover information that raised some questions for me about the use and management of our seated fund. Um, so I felt it was important to address that here. So as you know, Indiana code, I'm gonna sound like Bruce, six three six dash six dash nine dot five and six dash three dot six dash ten dot two. Outline eleven categories for the appropriate use of these funds. These include economic development projects, capital improvements. Operating expenses directly tied to such projects and other specific purposes. In speaking with the director at the State Board of Accounts, I learned that the common use required to maintain a capital improvement plan or a C I P on file. To ensure that expenditures align with those statutory requirements. This plan helps to provide clear guidance on how it allows to spend these funds and how to use them and to ensure transparency and compliance. So my understanding is that C I P has to be in place for at least two years before any changes can be made. And then after that, you can update those CIPs periodically for the seated funds, which is now lift funds, they changed the name of it, but. So from my review of the reports and the appropriation documents that were in the paper. Um, I have a few questions. So I know that we have two seated funds, one is the simple jail fund, and it's being used to fund salaries. Um, and some of those roles include the cook, the receptionist. While I did find out payroll, can certain circumstances fall under appropriate use? If it's tied directly to economic development projects, it's a little unclear whether these positions align with the purpose and scope. Of our two thousand twelve ordinance for the jail seated funds. Now that being said, that means there should be a C I P in place as well.
Could I just ask you real quick though? Um, jail seated is a separate, a separate tax that we went for just a jail, which one are you asking about right now, though, seated or jail seated?
So we have the ordinance, we were able to find the ordinance, and it does call out the building, demolition of the old jail. Maintenance of the jail, the facility, the lease, all that stuff. But in addition to the ordinance, we have to have what's called a. Capital improvement plan, I keep wanting to say council, but it's capital improvement plan. And that's what nobody's been able to provide. So my question becomes. With both of the things, the jail and our regular seated money, which seated originally was ordinance like twenty years ago is my understanding. And we can't find that ordinance, nobody's been able to attack that. Um, but there are eleven categories that are specified in the code. As operating expenses of government entity that plans or implements economic development projects. So while it could potentially justify the use of the funds for salaries, it does require. A very direct and explicit connection to the planning or implementation of economic development initiatives. So for example, salaries for project managers, planners, or staff that are directly engaged with economic development. Development projects might be qualified, however, roles such as receptionist cooks. Likely would not. Now, there is a stipulation. If you guys, when you wrote your C I P, said, yes, we're going to use this to fund. Overtime, longevity, cooks, all of those things, and that changes. I don't, the question that I have is, nobody can provide the C I P.
This is the first I've heard of it, have you mentioned this to commissioners already?
I, no, um, I, because it was the council.
I will say, we do have a C I P for. Seated, and Bruce may, he had been involved with the early part of that. But I will say, and, and you, and you may wanna speak this time, you've been around government for a long time, but I mean, as far as seated's concerned. The state allows expenditure under sedate for almost anything, I mean.
There's now, yeah, at the beginning they didn't, but now they do.
Changed over time, right, I mean, basically now.
But it's putting on a label, cuz I didn't realize it had labels in the printer, but these. They are, I didn't know they were in there. And again, you'll notice all of them, these are the eleven categories in the statute that allow. And again, my question just becomes, I'm not saying that I don't believe that we should use it for that, but the question is, do we have? A capital improvement plan that says, I mean, we need to have a capital improvement plan on file.
Yeah, well, honestly, I can't answer that right now, I mean, we have one of the new commissioners joining us, um. That might be something, at least, if not, I mean, December's gonna be hard for the commission to do it, but it might be something to put on your guys' list to. Start off with just revisiting that, you know what I mean?
I have gone through everything I could find from two thousand five through two thousand twenty. And I sent you five things that I found that had to do with seated and the jail thing.
Honestly, I don't recall that they said that we had to have a C I P for the jail seating, it's been a while, Robert, so I don't know for sure, but we can research it.
Yeah, and I just, that's my ask, is one, do we have an up to date C I P on file that outlines the approved uses for both the jail seated and the regular? And this is tax, definitely taxpayer money that we've been. Two, if so, does it justify the use of these sums, these funds for roles? That we're using it for EMS, which is the next part of the public hearing, is moving funds from seated to EMS. That was also in the paper for today. Um, and then if no C I P exists. Which I will tell you, we have to have one, like, I talked to the director at the State Board of Account, she said we would not be collecting that money every month. If we don't have, cuz you have to file it.
I, I know we have one, I guess, I just can't speak to it, it's been a long time, cuz I've seen it. It may, that's what I'm saying, it may date back to the early days of seating, I'm not sure. It's a good point, like, that's why I'm bringing it up to the, the, we have one commissioner present, I don't know if we have any online, but. Um. Yeah, or, or it's just, we just have to dig for it. Um, I.
So really what I'm asking, I guess, they, and council on my side is, I think this is something that we need to look at and try to understand what. Our seated funds are being used for. Funds, and if they're not being used for economic development purchases and mostly going to payroll, that's questionable, right?
I think the payroll question has been tested a lot of times though, with both seededs, I mean, we, we had them come up. And we, we asked the State Board of Accounts in the early days of the jail seated about payroll. And I don't know what the calculation was, but they did advise, you know, you don't wanna have it all be payroll, you don't wanna have the all one thing, but. Uh, we have, we have guidance that we followed on that, I just can't, I can't speak to it, I don't know if one of my colleagues can, but.
Aren't the lease payments being paid out of? Going out.
But either way, I guess my point is that we, we probably need to make.
Can we go back to you on that at the next meeting? Um, or, like, like I said, it might be a lot of commissioner authority here too, so like, we can. Let the commissioners know that you asked about it too, and whoever should be the one.
Yeah, whoever it is, I, I don't know whose authority it is.
I think we both signed off on it, but I think as far as the seated accounts go, I think the commissioners actually take the lead on it, so.
We need to try to find it instead of paying somebody five thousand dollars.
Okay, is anybody else for the public hearing portion? Somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion for the public hearing.
Second from Tony, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, would somebody like to go ahead and make that motion to take the step that? Um, auditor Houston is recommending that we go with, I think, like I said, I'd still like to. Take the recommendation of the auditor, keep not to move that way, but I'll leave it up to you.
Can you restate the recommendation?
Do you wanna pass it? Maybe start it with Bruce and have it end it.
I crossed off one item that we didn't need and I lowered the twenty five and twenty four.
And then you'll handle the advertisement by the deadline with Michaeline.
Yeah, as soon as, yes, I just would like to talk to her tomorrow to see if we have any, we're moving people, you know, we can do whatever and then.
I wonder since. Since Roberto said that the State Board of Accounts says we have to have one before we could. Collect the money, so it does exist, so. I wonder if Michaeline is the auditor. Contact the State Board of Accounts. Maybe it's in, I don't know, it's not, you're looking gateway, right?
I, okay, so while I was on the phone with Stephanie, she didn't try to pull it up and she said, State Board of Accounts does not keep it. She said it might be with the D L G F. Yeah, it's not an ordinance, it's, it's literally called a.
Yeah, it's pursuant to six dash three point six dash six dash nine point. I, I would think that if one had never been submitted, we wouldn't have been ever receiving any money, right? Because that, that's a condition precedent in the statute, but in order to get this money, we'd have to have.
Give us a month, maybe the commissioners will find something out of it, anytime Michael, Michaeline will let them know that you asked. And again, it could be dual authority, it could be just under authority of the commissioners, but.
Find the, the one that must have been created, you can always do a new one, it's like I said, you can amend it, and so we would.
It's possible, because I have gone, like I said, I sent you guys what I found. Two thousand five through two thousand twenty, I found those five items that I sent.
Yeah, so two thousand twelve was when they built jail, right? So we probably would have been two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve.
I just edited it since then.
The jail one may not be as hard to find as the original, for the regular seated, so. I, I like the idea that was suggested though about. The new regime. Being one of the early tasks for next year, whether it's together or whether it's just the commissioners, whoever has authority.
I mean, I think somebody needs to go to the, somebody needs to go to the bug factory and look through the boxes and try to find it. I mean, I'm on, I'm on vacation, we can thank you, I will go, go there and look for it, I mean. I will go there during the day, I'm off the whole week, so we can go through the spots and find the.
So give us a month. Unless the commissioners, commissioners have a meeting in two weeks, they can let you know if we find something else sooner.
So, are you ready for this? Alright. I guess the clue is up right now. Um, I'm gonna make an emotion, we have motion for the additional appropriations. From the seated special jail, jail fund. I'm not reading all these account numbers.
No, you don't need to.
This will propose in the following, we're just gonna read the long tubby jail, one one, one point four, one zero five zero zero for a thousand dollars. Overtime jail, same fund, one one four zero zero. Dot zero zero zero. Gas, oil, lube, fifteen thousand dollars, this is the two one one zero zero fund. Service contract jail, fifteen thousand dollars. Three zero four zero five. CAD system jail, same one 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 four, one. Four zero two seven five for twenty four thousand dollars. And the last one is vehicle patrol car deal, forty five thousand dollars. And that is four zero five zero two.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Was that, okay, okay, um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Is there any opposed? The old computers too or something?
It's the box on that's probably, I mean, I have a little bit next week.
Maybe you love the D L G F. Um, Rachel. Five minutes, you promised.
Don't listen to her, she fibs. Um, April. You had um. An additional appropriation that needed to be done.
You said it had to wait.
The K nine handler in the chief deputy?
Yeah, I think you said that it had to wait, didn't you?
This was advertised a long time ago, you sent it to me. Unless you submitted it again, not realizing you already submitted it. Right, right here, on October fifth.
It was a transfer. Those were transfers from ones to ones.
Oh, that's not the one that.
Yeah. You're good, we'll, we'll make sure we're on the same page for next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I don't usually give you guys a month for it, but I figured going over some stuff. Be easier to talk about what, some money stuff that we need. So we've had a busy fall, summer, um.
You were transferring from one department to another department, so that had to go before them. We're transferring from the jail to. Then Sarah.
When was it?
Twenty seven oh oh five.
Right here, this is, this is the one that I just sent you and you told me it had, I sent it to you this morning.
Yes, this.
You said it had to be advertised.
Right, but this one you gave to me on October, in October.
Okay, can we figure it out for next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not.
So I gave you a list of the following roads that we paved this year on five hundred north, on US thirty-five and Jefferson Street and Hamlet, we completed our first hot mix operations. This is the first time our paving crew has worked with hot mix, which is very different from working on PUG, I'm very proud of the work that they did on five hundred north, this project consists of one point five miles. And the cost was one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the hot mix material and thirty-five thousand dollars for the trucking. Our equipment is not set up properly to be able to haul hot mix, so we had tires incorporation to haul the hot mix. The hot mix was actually purchased from Milestone in Dapo. On five hundred north, we applied a quarter inch to a half inch wedge along the entire stretch to help take out that washboard field, the roadway, and then we finished up with a two inch layer of hot mix material. Wanted to highlight our paving crew, which consists of Reed Barnett, you, and Dan Hamilton. Takes a great, great need paving period, work together to accomplish new projects that we have completed lately. We have also completed the paving project for the Washington township in which we received. We will be receiving a fire truck for the project in lieu of payment. This is, it will be a great. Addition to our department as a fire truck is used for bridge maintenance in the spring, as well as being able to fill the roller onsite for a paving operation. We're now moving into winterizing for single access, they're available to spread salt standing in plowing. That will be up on them before we know it, our departmental operations will be slowed down to patching brush crews and plowing. Depending on the winter, we may or may not be extremely busy. For twenty twenty-four dash zero one C C N G, the work has been completed for the H M A overlay on six hundred north and certain areas from six hundred east. And six hundred east in certain areas from six hundred east. Now, six hundred north in certain areas from six hundred east, State Road twenty-three, four hundred north from US thirty-five, the Range Road. And the new road that was just built in Deerview Estate subdivision, which is also known as Johnson subdivision, the bid was forwarded to Milestone contractors and contracts haven't been closed. Twenty twenty-four dash zero two C C N G, we have been awarded this project, we just found out last week. This will consist, consist of hot mixed paving on two hundred south between Range Road and a hundred east. And Division Road between State Road to twenty-three and twelve hundred east. As well as four hundred south between Range Road and a hundred west, however, in reviewing the designs, I found the consultant on the project had mistyped the segment of four hundred south between Range Road and a hundred west. That was requested and the designs were made up for four hundred south between Range Road and a hundred east, so we'll be, we will be removing. That segment from the project. And my department will complete the H M A overlay ourselves beginning of next paving season. If the commissioners so wish us to. Um.
Can I ask a question at this time, since we're talking about paving?
Questions too.
Well, this morning, I understand, listening to the commissioners, that we're no longer gonna be using PUG, is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That's what I'm told.
That's what you're told, so now listen, so we put a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in a mile and a half.
Yeah, so.
With, with hot mix, what could we have done that with PUG? Please, I'd be honest.
Yeah.
So here's the thing. Uh, when it comes next year, you're gonna be buying hot, hot mix. With, with the allocations that were for PUG mix. And I'm here to tell you, I am not going to, you know, you're gonna just have to do with what you have as far as this little commu- or councilman's.
That's the way I feel too, there's no way, that's. Uh. That has a.
We've got a problem after controlling the PUG mix, let's address that.
Yeah.
And this, this is deliberate, cause this is, uh, I'm sorry, I just. I couldn't contain myself.
Well, I, when we was out there looking at the things went out there, I questioned myself when I was told, we're no longer gonna be using. This, we're gonna be the hot mix, like, what are you gonna do, four miles in the county every year?
I wonder, I mean, doesn't it have to be voted on and motion by the?
I don't know.
And what committee are just saying that we're not gonna use it anymore?
It will create the, the decree throughout the land, you didn't catch that?
No, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Well, we'll talk about that pretty soon.
It just upsets me.
Any more questions?
Sorry.
No. Your truck orders.
Can I ask a quick question? Does that mean if we didn't do the hot mix, you wouldn't need all this stack of equipment?
No.
So he would submit it, okay, all right.
Great, great chance to get out of it then, Dave.
I don't get to say all year now, instead of doing fifty, sixty miles will be used for.
Yeah, and it would be like new for next year.
I would say you don't need it.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do high miss, you don't need it, I would just rent one, no more than what you're gonna do, because you're only gonna do a couple of miles.
Well, I don't think that's gonna last, and I think the people here in Stark County are pretty upset when I heard that there's somebody in the back.
Does it, can we have a ten year plan as far as the, the, the roads go?
Yes, it's in that five year asset plan and it's on the LTAP website, we're required to do one.
Go with, with the hot mix, are we gonna meet that ten years plan?
Not gonna be as many miles for sure, right? I mean, it'll be less, I think.
Um. About, yes.
Four.
Ten before I got shut down on making.
How long ago were you shut down on the bus? I did fifteen, twenty-five years ago.
That's what you should be doing between fifteen and twenty miles.
How do you know this question better than anybody here? Is the quality of PUG just as good as hot mix?
And I need to.
No, but the quality of PUG for these low volume roads is.
I understand, that's what I'm asking.
It's, if, you can't, you can't compare, you can't compare apples to apples. You know, it's apple to oranges, in this case, apple to orange are the same. So. PUG. PUG is a low, it's made for low volume roads, there's a thing called an easel count. Which has to do with the amount of weight, the amount of trucks, and it's all figured out the lifespan of the whole road. An asphalt road might have an easel count of fifty thousand, these roads probably got an easel count of. Five thousand. And so. The PUG, if it's made correctly, like it has been in the past. It's gonna last. The, the life, if you figure the, if you figure the life cycle, that's what you have to look at, you can't look at how much it is now, you gotta look at the life cycle. The life cycle between asphalt and PUG. In these low volume situations. Is probably not very, not very different. Supposedly they're done right, especially, everybody hates chip seal, I know you hate chip seal, but PUG roads have to be chipped, chipped sealed. Because the oil is different. And all the moisture that's in the oil evaporates and it loosens up. The, the surface of it, so you have to chip seal it. So. The chip sealant does two things, it seals that PUG in, and also. Not only doing that. Increases the longevity, but just the longevity in general, I know everybody hates it, so they chip sealed the road in front of my house, the town did, and everybody came to my house screaming. I go, I don't work for the town, I said, that's the smartest.
The state does twenty-three.
Yeah, so.
Well, but we, we did a hundred eight, a hundred miles a, at times when, when you were.
We did ninety miles of chip seal and fifteen miles of paving.
If you do a good job of railing. That sure eliminates a lot of problems with the chips.
And the roller, the roller is needed. No matter what. I would, I would say if they're gonna do all hot mix and no PUG, they don't need a roller, just go rent one, for no more than what they're gonna do, so they're not gonna have the money to do it. So. I would say. I would say. In my feelings, the appropriation of that money for that roller. Hinges on what's gonna happen with the paving program. Because I don't know why we would spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars on something that's gonna sit. For fifty weeks out of the year, that doesn't even make sense.
Couldn't we disable it until December to select, let that information go back to the commissioners?
Can you just approve it contingent upon the paving program?
Would anybody be willing to do that?
Can, can we get to that first?
Okay, sorry.
Go through here.
Okay.
Okay, truck orders, I've been updated with estimated build times on the following trucks, the Western starters, um, actually, we're going to pick those up Thursday. The international single axle has been pushed back to July of twenty twenty-five, and the two international tandems have been pushed back to October, November twenty twenty-five. Um. One note on all the, so all the TANs that were ordered prior to me taking off is out there, were ordered without belly blades. Tandem should be ordered with belly blades, even on gravel roads we have and the grading we do, I've ordered belly blades for the Western stars, but they are not expected to come in for about a year and a half. When they come in, the trucks will go back to Lenco to have those mechanisms installed. Okay. On to the road.
I thought Dan, I thought Dan said that the tandems cut the road, cut, cut too hard because they're so heavy with belly blades. Okay. I just thought there, I thought he had reasons behind it, I just.
Our department is requesting, so. All the equipment we're gonna talk about, have our mechanics here, if you have any questions, concerns, he'll be able to answer anything about the mechanisms of our equipment. Our department is requesting a few new equipment purchases, the first item is a new steel ground roller, our roller is too big for a lot of the work that we do, so it leaves a winding pavement that is laid. It also breaks down at every single job site we're at, the sprayer does not work properly anymore, and our mechanics are constantly cleaning out the sprayer novels onsite, which takes time. Um, away from our productivity, we have cleaned the roller tank as well as the tanks of the equipment that we use to fill the roller, and we still have problems. When the roller stops spraying mid-use, it damages the new pavement that has been laid. I brought quotes tonight for different rollers and you would be asking for additional appropriation basically to use the cash fund balance of two point two million dollars that is sitting in there in fund one, one, seven, three to purchase this equipment. I'm allowed to use one, one, seven, three because it is for construction reconstruction and preservation of the roadways, because rollers are only used in our county on new pavement. Um. So we have sufficient funds to purchase this piece of equipment, the commissioners approved. Um, the hundred. It's a cat. Yeah. Um. It's available now. Uh.
The two John Deere tractors, they said they were gonna give you ten thousand apiece, are they giving, are these people giving you anything for the roller?
I do trade in on the roller, on the old roller.
If it's too big and you can't use it, wouldn't you wanna trade it in? Curious.
Obviously.
Are you talking about the old fifty, four hundreds that they're gonna get ten thousand dollars for? No.
The ones that you bought in nineteen ninety-six for eighteen thousand dollars, they are giving us ten thousand dollars apiece for that.
You know what the plan originally was?
Yeah.
We got a twenty-five percent, uh, uh. Municipal discount.
Yeah.
So the plan was, we're gonna use them two or three years, sell them and then go back and get other new ones with that, that municipal discount.
And pay for them.
And, but that's what you get when you start thinking like a businessman. And, uh, that, that, but that, that's, that's amazing and.
That, that's worth ten grand, I'm always beating up on Kubota versus John Deere, but heck, the sale value is definitely better on the deer.
Pause and talk about the roller before we go on to the other appointment.
We've talked about the roller, but. Here's, here's my talk on the roller, I'm not in favor of purchasing anything. Until we find out what the paving plan is for sure. Because otherwise. I'm not gonna throw money, just some can throw money ass. That, that is not. That's not real business in my, in my, in my mind, that's my opinion, you guys, you guys can vote, do whatever you want, make the motion, but. That's the way I feel.
Well, you.
If one person thinks they can just stop the whole PUG program without it being voted on the commissioners. And coming does saying, hey, this is gonna cost more money, well then I guess it's time we put the brakes on it. Say. Not gonna happen.
Well, that was my first thought, was if we're gonna go to all hot instead of PUG. Your, your reduction is, is what, four to one, three to one? Uh, you might as well go on lease, lease a roller.
Perhaps, you might as well just pay somebody to do it.
So are you okay if we tabled?
Yes, that's fine. Move on to the low boy.
Yeah, you wanna make, did you wanna make?
I'll make a motion to be tabled, purchase the roller until we know exactly what the. What the paving plan is gonna be from. For the county highway.
I'll second it.
The second from Cassandra, she beat you, Bruce, sorry, all those in favor, I?
I.
All in favor, Michaeline.
All right, the second item is new low boy, um, I'm actually. I don't, I don't have a quote that I like to prevent, to present to you tonight, but I just wanted to tell you that I am gonna need a new low boy. I am gonna be paying for it out of one, one, six, nine, out of some of the, um, cash reserves we have in there, our current low boy is old and slows down our productivity. You, you can only haul one piece of equipment at a time, and the slope is too steep for our new paver, so we are breaking book boards. Constantly, and, and Paul has a few other things that's going on with the low boy.
When you. Hook the pen and do it. When you split the actual front of the trailer apart, we have. For lack of better terminology, the pencil that goes in there, that has been reworked like three times. And it's just, it's in bad shape. Um, we have redacted one time prior and the deck is getting. Bad, but a lot of wear and tear comes from. Just how high that one sits.
So, uh, this, the low boy that we have now is actually purchased twenty-five years ago, used. Um, so.
I, I was obviously there.
I didn't get to tell about all this time, but.
That would be exactly right, Bruce.
When I get a quote that, of a low boy that I. Want to present that I, that we. Like.
Here's the thought too about the low boys. I know a lot of construction companies, one that I worked for, uh, multi, multi-million dollar bridge company, we didn't even know a low boy. We hired somebody to move everything. And move all equipment, everything, we didn't move anything. We, especially if we're not gonna have a paving plan. How much equipment are you gonna need to move?
Could, could you contract with a, a big farmer to do that? Don't, a lot of farmers have.
There's like P, like PNC, PNC Trucking, they like moved. All of our stuff, I'm sure there's. Plenty more. That's all they are, they're, they're trucking companies, but one of their specialties is low boy, moving of equipment, I mean, it's just something to think about.
I know Charlie said that a used one is about as much as a new one.
Yeah, I'm looking at about probably sixty-two thousand dollars, um, on the low boy that we want. I don't, I mean, that's an idea.
So think about it, I don't know what the cost is, but I know we never owned one because it wasn't worth it.
But we do, um, move the equipment during the paving season a couple of times a week.
Yeah, well, you won't be moving nearly as much if we don't have a plan.
I feel like we need to figure that out because I just don't see the county, let me just get away with doing four or five miles a year. I mean, I'll go back to Reagan, citizen, I'm gonna be here in every meeting screaming at.
We, we have the power to stop all of it.
I'm just saying.
We're gonna, we gotta. Back to us about the low boy then, okay?
It's back to you about the low boy, so the third and fourth items are new mowers for roadside mowing. All right, we, we have two brush choppers, each chopper is a new Holland, one's two thousand thirteen, one's two thousand four, the two thousand four is a no longer working order. Um, the arm on this tractor has to be replaced, but the arm itself cannot be replaced because the base is no longer a sound structure. I've received a quote from John Deere through Sourcewell for the tractor and the arm and the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The two thousand thirteen is still on working order, but it's not overall a sound structure whatsoever, it's been down actually for almost a week. We, I would like to get a new brush chopper, making the two thousand thirteen a backup brush chopper, so the commissioners this morning are in favor of it, but they want me to get one more quote. So I'll be bringing you, you, this will be coming up again, probably at your next meeting.
So it was a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
For the, yeah, for the tractor and the arm, they have a leasing program, I can afford the leasing program in LRS, but yeah, we're not gonna pay for it, so. So that's a brush chopper, so currently we have four. Closed cab mower tractors, three of the four mowing tractors still have good decks, but one of the new Holland has a broken deck. Um, we also have four open cab tractor mowing tractors. Three of those tractors will run, but only one has a sound deck, we have tried getting quotes for the mower deck itself for the three open cab tractors that still run. But since the cab tractors are from nineteen ninety, since the open cab tractors are from nineteen ninety-six, the roll over protection service, the ROP system is outdated and they no longer have seat belts. So the engineers that from John Deere will not quote a mowing deck anymore for the open cab tractors due to the ROP system being outdated. Um, I've received a quote from John Deere for a closed cab tractor in the amount of one twenty-seven, four fifty-six. They do have a four-year lease program, we are getting ten thousand dollars each from the four open cab tractors that we have. Um, but. Again, I can build this into the budget in LRS, but that is not gonna leave any room for. Building a cash balance anymore, so all we, every week collect will be paid out in leasing, because I'm gonna pay. On the fourteen that released several years ago.
All, all I can say is you move government's worst enemy, it's government. Simple.
So I'll be coming back for the tractor.
Well, that, weren't the bits for the tractors shut down?
They, they weren't shut down, they're in favor of them, but they want me to get the new Holland bid before they.
Did you put these bits all out at one time?
I, they're source well, so.
I, I, I'm just asking, did you put them out, and if, if they want the business, they, they quote them.
It's like pulling teeth trying to get quotes anymore.
Well, that's too bad, then they've got more business than they need, but, uh, but I, I don't know why you would make a special exception. If one had put in a bid. And why the others put that's, I personally, I'm a John Deere person, that's all it is.
So I'll be back. At your next meeting.
Uh, two good one ten.
Pulver replacement, this is not my fault, this is going too long, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. There is a concrete pulvered on three fifty east, South of State Road ten, that's beginning to fail, this is considered a small structure, and if it's over Cedar Lake ditch, which is not a regulated drain in California township, it consists of. And if it's over Cedar Lake Ditch, which is not a regulated drain in California township, it consists of a single-span concrete case and a. Place box structure. The existing pulver is anticipated to be replaced with a twenty eight feet long foot long pulver. With a slightly larger hydraulic opening. We do not have the proper equipment in my department to handle this replacement. I would like to hire US consultants to handle the field survey, the environmental services. There's gonna be a lot of environmental services on it, the project design and bidding services. I will be handling the bridge construction inspection for the project. The cost for the services will be thirty three thousand dollars, which will come out of cumulative bridge. I'm asking for your approval to move move forward. Um, with the contracted services, basically being able to use the Q and Bridge funds and additional appropriation of thirty three thousand dollars.
Which south of my filter hands just go straight.
Oh, I know where it is. Okay.
Everything out there is is solar panels.
The estimated cost for the entire project is gonna be around two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred dollars. The cash balance in Cambridge right now is four ninety three, nine sixty. So I definitely have enough paid for this project.
I'm thinking of a code that they say. Twelve twelve by six, so they're putting this wash pipe. Now, all I can say was, when I was there, we turned a class breaker in that by ourselves, with junk equipment.
Would you like to come out and do that one?
That's that's why I went like that. I went out. I remember.
Because I don't, didn't understand why it had to be so big because the down and up is smaller, but the it's.
Yes, that's 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 the one where it's like a, it's like a four, it's like a four-foot box called. And it's not a regulated drain. Why are we putting that that one in that is. By type of size, probably at least of what that other was, when upstream and downstream, there's nothing. Doesn't make any sense.
That Cedar Lake Ditch is not a regular.
No, it it makes absolutely no sense. Why would you put, why would you put a pipe with two hundred square foot opening where on both ends of you got one that has forty? That doesn't even make any sense. What we doing? Is it storm water? I I don't I don't know. I'm I'm just asking the question. It doesn't make sense.
Doesn't it usually have a hydraulic study to decide?
Well, it's not a regulated drain, so, but the thing is, if you got a pipe at both ends, it is.
Well, you say it makes sense, but how does it? How would we have decided to go so big before, do you think, if we didn't have a study?
That's the one you can stand up in.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, I mean. That's not my my point to bring that up, but.
Do a real quick one since I remember earlier.
Uh, as far as that cover goes, that where you pointed out that it was on a solar road. Would uh would the solar company be um in charge of funding any of that repair? Because that's a highly.
All I bet that cover was put in the thirties.
That was one of my thoughts too, though, is like, okay, it's all the, all that's out there, solar. So there's no written contract that says that the solar has to pay for that. It was not in the road use agreement, but the commissioner vaguely is gonna go to the meeting and talk to Mammoth about that. So hopefully, a lot of this would be funded through Mammoth, Doral, but I just. I, right now, I just want the approval to move forward on the project. As far as the design, the the environmental, so I mean, really, we need the environmental services first. Here's more, move on.
Here's here's a question. Are there any houses on that road? It's a dirt road, isn't it?
Yeah, you got it or Don. And he goes across it with his farm somewhere. That's about a quarter of a mile south of uh. But the farmers have to have.
You want to make a motion on something to get started?
The money in Q and Cab to get started. All that other stuff he's complaining about.
Don't you mean Cambridge?
Cambridge, I'm sorry, yes.
Based on, we don't have any choice in this matter and hopefully we'll get my out of Doral. I will, I will make the motion. That would take thirty two thousand four hundred out of Q and Bridge to move forward with the studies. If you're united, it's all in to get this project done and out of our face.
We have a motion for an additional appropriations by Todd. Is there a second? I I think Tony beat you. Sorry, kid. Um, second by Tony, but will I have an aye from you?
Yeah.
All those in favor, aye? Are there any opposed? Is that it?
No. I've given you an early coordination letter from US thirty improvements from US on the US thirty nine point five miles east of US thirty five in Marshall Star County. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, let me know. You're gonna be speaking with Shannon regarding the project. That's horrible. Like, it goes away right now and this will be done next year. Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for having the branch for us. Hey, we just have our final things.
Yes, okay, first of all. We have this meeting scheduled that I wanted to discuss with you. When we were at our meeting, they said we could do. For the whole year, would take in case if there's anything, any changes, then you do need to. Post it, but we posted anyway, but just to be on the same side, it's a good idea to do that.
Do it the year before, since I guess we only have one new member, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We used to do our meetings at four.
I don't know, ever since I've been here, I was told four thirty. But if you wanted a four, I'd like to. Yeah.
The later the better, the more public access we have to our meetings.
Agreed.
And uh, let's do it at six then.
That's fine.
For next year. Oh, I'm sorry, but yeah, what will that?
I can, I can work, I can work it out with, the Jets, don't don't hold it up on me. I can work it out with Johnson.
Originally, we did four of it, so.
I'll work it out with them.
Maybe they could go earlier.
I can just contact, I'm only contracting, I'll be attend one meeting if there's a month. I've gotta skip one.
Okay. Yes, maybe we could do six thirty.
You guys do whatever time you want and I'll I'll.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if you want to go later for the public, maybe six thirty is better, better.
I think six, the most usually when I get feedback on this is people are asking about six o'clock. Any later than that, then they go too late and people don't wanna come and stay out too late. I'm not far behind.
So can we change that to six and then we'll sign it?
Do we, do we need that?
You wanna make one?
Form a motion? I'll make a motion that for next year's meetings, they're on the third Monday of the month at six PM um. Possible subject to change, two-day notice and subject to change due to holidays.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second. Sorry, further discussion? All those in favor, aye? All in favor, Mike Lee?
Cause there might be a holiday in there, I don't know.
Yeah, I've got that in here.
Right.
It said Monday is the holiday, the meeting will be the next day, which is Tuesday at the same time and location.
Alright.
Okay, well, I can sign this then because, okay, you've got more additional appropriations and transfers. Tom, Shobin is here for one and Amy, Lori is here for one. And Circuit Court sent you a letter about theirs.
And then Jim had some things that the commissioners approved and. No, Jim's, Jim's going to do a training. I wanted to let everybody know. I asked him to get ahold of Todd since Todd was the vice president. Uh, Jim is not gonna attend. I just let everybody know. He has some things that were approved by the commissioners, but he's going to a, he he's leaving for work, for training. For the county. That's why he's not here.
Or is that what we're gonna talk about now is EMS?
Well, no, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, since.
Okay.
Since Jim's not here, I think you're gonna wanna get the two, so. Tom, Shobin, in the supervisor's office.
I don't wanna spend much time on it.
He needed two thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars for attorney fees for the drainage board because his fund is running short. She increased her prices. So all I can go.
Her con, she does her contracts at the beginning of the year and her prices were two thousand. For three of the boards and fifteen hundred for the other board, which is total seven thousand five hundred dollars. And I appropriated for last year for only thirty five hundred. And I didn't know it was going up until she.
It went from thirty five hundred to seventy five hundred?
Because that's what she's.
So it doubled, over-doubled in one year?
Yeah.
Man, I'm practicing law on.
I know. Did you did you lay out for any other attorneys to take a look at it?
Last day, can we have some?
I I I spent almost uh.
Seems crazy to me, I mean.
I'm not saying it ain't, I'm just saying it just.
It overdoubled it.
Yeah, when.
So was there a written contract that was signed and was contracted for this increased amount or?
No, it was, she never had a contract. It's when Mr. Bedrock passed away. She came on board at the beginning of last year of twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Fine writing somewhere though that says she can change in the middle of a fiscal year? Though, that is kinda strange.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know if there's fine writing.
Can we, can we table it and ask and try to research that? I mean, I think.
There is no con- contract. I wanna know under what.
She's got a contract with the drainage board members.
Okay, but you, at first you said she didn't have.
No, she's got, she's got four contracts upstairs in the office with the drainage boards members that they sign.
For next year.
For this year.
Okay.
Thirty five.
I had put it in the, I put it in the, in the, in the budget. For twenty twenty three, for twenty twenty four at thirty five hundred. At the first of the year, which was January first. When we had our drainage board meetings, she presented the contract to the drainage board meeting for two thousand dollars. On each, for each board except for one, and it was at fifteen hundred.
So we've known about that since the first of the year and it's, and it's November and we're just talking about it?
Yeah, and that's my fault. And she, and her contract is up, is up December thirty first, so should we have to renew? Contracts at the beginning of the year for the drainage board.
So we have to appropriate to pay for money that we never appropriated for something, services we got. To to get that back in the, or in the red and the black.
That's correct.
And the next year, what what was in the budget next year for legal?
Thirty five hundred also.
So then that's, then that's gonna have to be changed too.
Yes, it'll be changed also.
What do we do?
I'd like to, I would, I guess I'd move to table it until we can see copies of those contracts.
Lisa said we did the due diligence for the public.
Yeah, I'll I'll second passing motion.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All in favor, Mike Lee. Sorry, Tom.
I'll make copies. I'll give them to Mike Lee and she can email and tell everybody.
I don't know.
So we went through next year's appropriations. Putting in the thirty five hundred when we really need the four thousand dollar short already. There is, is that it? Am I?
That's my fault because I didn't look.
That's what happened.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
He also has a transfer.
Uh, for extra help, we were over a hundred and sixty dollars and seventy eight cents for the year. My employee put extra time off this year, so we had to have extra help. And we're over a hundred and sixty dollars and seventy eight cents.
Is it just appropriation or is it transfer?
But you also did a transfer for the.
And for here, transfer a thousand dollars for attorney.
Thousand, right?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
We don't even.
Do we need the?
Do we even need one?
Need what?
A transfer.
That's, I would, I wasn't sure. I didn't think we had to.
I think you're giving, giving them the one I already did.
Yeah.
I already did that.
You don't need it for that one.
No.
Yeah.
He's got in for a trans uh, a transfer for a thousand and twenty two dollars.
That's for the attorney.
With coming out of four hundred and twenty two dollars out of meetings, three hundred out of travel and three hundred out of legal notices.
So that'll square you up for this year then?
That's, he, those transfers are to keep that amount lower than what it would have been.
Okay, so those would go with the same table then?
These are all the same fund too. But but first of all.
If if we don't have, if we're short the attorney.
Four thousand dollars, whatever we said.
Two thousand.
Okay, two thousand. Then we have one here for a thousand twenty two. What what is this attorney? Is this a different attorney?
That's gonna lower him down to twenty two.
That was to lower it down so that the additional was only two thousand and something instead of more.
We moved money around from others.
It's not the same account.
No.
It's coming from the three hundred, the three thousands to the personal.
You got down here. One thousand, three thousand, three thousand.
Alright.
These monies were gonna be used. So we gotta transfer some, so we have to give him so much.
I'm I I I will have, I will have to admit that I am very thoroughly confused by this whole ordeal. It doesn't, I just can't, I can't grasp on what's going on here.
Okay.
I mean, somebody's gotta, I'll be a picture or something. I don't know.
Okay, the thing is, he would have had to ask for a thousand dollars more than what he asked for, but he was trying to keep the amount down. So we went through and figured out transfers he could do. Otherwise, the additional would have been for almost four thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's what I saw.
But they were trying to transfer stuff over to the. Four thou, four hundred twenty two dollars, three hundred and three hundred, which is one thousand twenty two dollars. To help pay for the shortage for the employer.
What what I'm getting at, if we voted to table on it because we wanna see the contracts, you were paying that money for that same contract we haven't seen.
Yeah, that's part of the table. Yeah, that would, that would actually.
But this is, while you tabled the additional, this is transfers, so.
From the same transaction.
Yeah, so it's still part of the same thing.
Yeah.
This don't make a difference anymore.
Right.
So you'll email us copies of the contract?
Yeah, I'll get.
Thank you.
Mike Lee copies and I'll surely mail them to you guys.
Thank you.
So we're gonna table the transfer?
I make motion tables for it because it's the same situation as what the contract is.
Yeah, a second from Tony. All in favor, aye? Is there any opposed?
I took a minute to figure that out.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Okay, uh, Amy.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Amy.
Also meeting, I'm asking for an additional appropriation of thirteen thousand two hundred to go into repair and maintenance.
Okay, we, I'm talking about that, just for the pumps.
Yeah, that's all we, we need to know what it's for.
Yeah.
Then I'll see what there's on.
Cost a lot of stormwater damage to the sewer pumps, which caused them to fail on.
On a plan to fix that term, but, and the pumps are working now.
So so we had talked about this before. Remember we said if they needed more money, we would be willing to give them, give them. Is is that, is that amount? Is there a bill? Is there a bill or is that, is that the exact amount forward or what? We're just like.
We did some transfers and we got it down to.
That'll get you where you need to be.
Yeah.
They they have money in the fund, we're just doing additional.
Alright, since I'm trying to be team players here, and I don't know if you guys have contracts that aren't signed, but I'll make a motion. That we approve the transfer of the thirteen thousand two hundred to take care of the.
That's additional.
Additional, I'm sorry, additional, additional appropriation for the thirteen two hundred.
I have a second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
That was easy.
Okay, oh, this additional appropriate, or this thing I was talking about with. Uh, April, she submitted this back in October as a transfer. But it was from, and I was trying to explain this to her, but I don't think she was understanding what I was saying. She did it as a transfer from the jail budget to the sheriff's budget. And that has to be done as an additional and a reduction. It has. And that has to be done as an additional and a reduction. It has to be advertised, so that's why I advertise it. She's got another one coming up again for the next time, but it can't be. Done just as a straight transfer.
Right.
Because it's from two different departments.
Sure.
And I even checked with State Board of Accounts because she wasn't understanding that.
You have to advertise that again then?
No, I've got this one advertised. This one just needs to be approved. It's eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five per canine. Twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five hundred and twenty-five for chief deputy with a reduction in the jail.
Well.
From personnel for five hundred. Three thousand. And seventy-seven hundred, pulling eleven thousand two hundred in reductions out of the jail, eleven thousand two hundred. Going into the sheriff.
So that according to those, according to that account of.
You wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, go ahead. Good.
As long as I don't have to breed a bunch of zero.
Is that gonna be sufficient? Is Michaeline read that? Is that sufficient? Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from K, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All in favor, Michaeline.
Okay, so that one's okay. There's, there's more.
Why you hearing that?
I'm sorry.
There's more from April?
Uh, no.
Oh, thank goodness.
I just wanna make sure I get these marks before I forget. Okay, um, so that you tabled that, oh. The, to finish up the additionals, you have the EMS. And then there's some transfers I wanna discuss with you. But EMS additionals.
And the, uh, the, the commissioners had approved today additional appropriations for the EMS to get some hardware. Uh, like I said, he's not here.
So, while we're on the EMS, just real quick, I, I think there was some major confusion in our last meeting. I mean, when you, when you went to the commissioners meeting, you said we didn't approve both.
No, I said I wasn't sure.
You did though, right?
Uh, but you called them and straightened out, so they still did it, the two ambulances. Yeah, they did it.
Okay, because, because I thought we'd approved.
Approved it, but it still has to be advertised.
No, I understand that. I'm just making sure we didn't have to make, make enough.
I just wanted to make sure it was all it was, yeah.
Something else, April, I couldn't, I was having trouble getting through to April. Was that she kept saying they already approved the two cars in their meeting, but you still have to get an additional appropriation. I think she finally understood. That's been advertised.
I wish he was here. You know why I wish he was here? Cause he's done such a good job.
Yeah, you know, he told me today, he said that I, I've always thought dreamed of them being in the black.
Hey, the EMS is just.
And I think, I think he's pretty close, isn't that correct?
On that first page. The other stuff is just papers they.
Yeah. Today of course, and it was back in the day too, that, that, which makes a difference, but yes.
But we were, we were, we never were in the black.
There were hundreds of thousands of dollars.
He is just.
A lot of it has to do with them, um, not using as mu- as many, because they didn't have people. Now they're staffed up, but during those times when they didn't have staff, they were accumulating extra. That's where these funds are coming from. But since you were, since it's ending up with you and you're in favor, well, we give it up to you to make the motion if you'd like.
Tony, open.
Yeah, I don't think he has any problems. I think he's done a tremendous job and I wanna work within every step of the way.
Just for your identification, Tony, as you're helping Bruce, it's just the first page on the bottom.
Yeah, could you, I'm not saying anything. I am, boy, this is a lot of zero.
I know, you don't need to read all that.
I don't.
No, just read the amounts and what they're like, say a big, that's about two thousand dollars or something like that.
Okay, so, uh, we are transferring.
No, additional appropriation.
Well, this is an additional, okay, additional from four, full-time staff, fifty-nine thousand dollars. Full-time paramedic, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, part-time staff, ten thousand dollars. For a ship captain, ten thousand dollars and part-time paramedic, eight thousand dollars. That's for the EMS, correct? I don't.
That's your motion?
I know that, uh, that we, um, allow the additional.
A motion from Bruce, is there a second? Second from Tony, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask all those in favor to say aye.
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 Is there any opposed?
Yeah, I need that back, please.
I will send that to you. I want you to know, young lady, that you're a lot more work than Rachel used to be.
I'm just trying to get the accounts straightened up. Okay, then, um, I thought Stanley was gonna be here. He has a transfer. Um, that had to be advert- no, this didn't have to be advertised, twelve dollars for contracts. Seventeen thousand two seventy-eight ninety-seven for service contract. Additional coming from. Oh, coming from a thousand fuel, tires and lube, twelve office supplies and eleven thousand telephone.
So what's a service contract for?
He's just short the WTH, the GIS system is twelve dollars.
But what's seventeen thousand dollars short? What is that contract?
Yeah, what's the service contract?
Oh, the service, that, I don't know.
Looking for lost emails or what's it for?
Especially for something, a service contract.
Well, that's a lot of money. That ought to be upfront.
If, if you wanna move on to the signatures that we need to do all the way. Why don't you do that while I'm talking to Stanley?
That's not that purple people when they screwed up.
In, in the situation where he's not here to answer questions, I'm moving to table this, this also.
I'll second.
He's on the phone with him.
Which service? The internet service. Sorry, which, the servers. Okay, so it's not service, it's for servers, right?
Yeah.
Cost for them to be closer to like thirty-five thousand.
I'm looking, I'm looking on the server part. It was the service contract that threw me off. I wasn't aware of one of those. I, I, I do recall that you brought servers to the commissioners. Yes, okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
He wrote service contract on here.
But it's because there's only, that's, it has to fit somewhere and usually puts servers in service contract, but it's for hard, it's for servers.
Okay.
Which originally they were looking at thirty-five thousand and some change, but he found them for seventeen thousand.
So that's buying new servers.
Servers.
But that's for the old servers.
They get sold on the, uh.
What about all the data that's on it?
No, there's a, there's a protocol for data.
Yes.
We, we have a requirement for what we do with the data part.
I think they send them.
So obviously it must be more service than what we have.
Additionals you have down there, just sign, sign your name and pass it back and let them all sign their names on it.
I've already sent, I've already sent it back.
Oh.
I'll have to send it back so I can send it back.
Somebody wanna make a motion on Stanley's transfers?
I'll make a motion that we approve that because he's purchasing new servers and that was approved by the commissioners.
We have a motion, uh, and a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? It was Cassandra in case. There was a motion to table it?
Oh yeah, actually, when we thought it was a service contract, yes, Howard.
Now that it's a server, that makes a little more sense.
Yeah, you did say aye also, right, Howard?
Yeah, I, I'll agree to that now, but I, you know, I, I. I, I'm not sure why he's not here, but. I really, I really think as a board, we've all collectively thought over the last few years anyways that. When they're requesting this kind of money, we, we do like to see, and I understand, I understand Jim's got a situation tonight and he's not here, but. I, I really would like to see the people here to answer the questions that, that we'd like to.
Um, thank you, Howard. The minutes on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four average.
We have a motion to accept as written from Todd, is there a second? All those in favor, aye.
I think we made the transfer.
Uh, we just fill them right in while we were waiting for Michaeline, I was just knocking some other stuff out.
Bruce, were you the one that seconded that on the minutes? Oh, tell me you did, okay, thank you.
That will get stronger present. Okay, go ahead.
MS had some transfers in the amount of ninety-six thousand five hundred that were from one category to another category, so. I, uh, ships have been part-time paramedic.
Didn't we do that? Did just do that? We did that.
Oh, okay, sorry. That circuit court one for the. Three dollars and seventy-three cents for equipment and a thousand dollars for the CASA, I gave you the letter about it. That Kim sent over.
Would you read that again? I'm sorry, I didn't, I was signing my name, wasn't, didn't hear what that was.
I didn't see.
It's, I think it's. I think it's in, she was talking about in regards to, oh, circuit court, is that right?
It was a thousand dollars and then three dollars and twelve cents.
Three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Three seventy-three.
And they're taking the three seventy-three from official bonds. And the thousand dollars from other services and charges. To, uh, equipment, three dollars and seventy-three cents and CASA, GAL, for a thousand.
What we do as well?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the two transfers. The first one is a thousand dollars from other services to CASA. And the second one is three dollars and seventy-three cents from bonds to. Equipment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Tony, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would stand.
And one abstention.
Takes care of all, so I need to be signed. These needed to be brought up tonight. Oh, okay. Um, now this thing with, with the commissioners first deputy. Have you guys decided what you're gonna do? Because they all payment, or I was told that they explained everything to you guys.
I didn't get any answers.
Well, I know I sent you some stuff about it, but I thought you guys talked to the commissioners too.
No, I never talked to anybody about it. I didn't.
I know, I know what it's about.
I think we tabled it originally because they hadn't provided any information.
Well, no, what they did was.
No, as far as I know, we tabled it because it just came up at a, at a meeting with no advance notice, no information.
All I know is that I, when I was going through the accounts when I first got here, this one was way in the red. I asked about it.
Nobody.
She, they were just told to pay it. So they were paying it.
Once again, we go.
I, I made motion. All those in favor, aye. Is there any opposed? Are you, are you, I also, Bruce, to table?
Um, yeah, I am. That is, just for clarification, is this what we used to call a floating in? Employee, is that, is that?
Well, that's kind of basically what she was doing at first. I think lately she's been mostly in the accessory.
A job description, I, where are all?
Yeah, I, I, I understand the situation, but I don't appreciate not being informed. And the right hand never knows what the left hand's doing around here, and I think they could have showed us enough respect. To explain.
And to follow proper procedure.
Excuse me, I want to have that first one.
And a complete job description.
Yeah, the job description and why there should be an exception to a guy or increase. We enforce that. Uh, every other time things like that come up.
Now Sarah has something she needs to talk to you about.
And Sarah will be quick, I already know that, yeah.
Yes, I put in front of each of you the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance. Um, either looking for approval or comments, um, suggestions. I took. Last year's salary ordinance and gave, um, all employees a three percent increase as directed in the budget hearings. Um.
And, and for the HMS compliance, you brought two people up that FDA sounded that were closed.
Yes, this morning, um, the commissioner voted to, um, increase the IT director. Yes, the FLSA, the federal one, you know, with a wage. It had to be fifty-eight thousand dollars minimums. So they, um.
Well, for unemployment, like everybody that's. Uh, below fifty-eight thousand has to be able to receive unemployment when they work more than forty hours.
So that, um, is what it was originally. It hasn't been changed as of this morning. Six fifty-six is what this IT director would go up to.
Where to go?
Public health nurse would also go up to that fifty-eight thousand, so that was over the three percent, so I just wanted to note that.
Honestly, public health nurse, yeah, makes a lot of sense.
Those were the only two that they voted to keep. Fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. The federal, federal minimum. Other.
Everything else of yours.
Uh, not, I can recall, no. Everything was three percent, including those part-time wages.
I don't know if we see this all right now. But I know we voted, we voted, I'm hoping voters. My, my ability.
See, the other thing that happened was some people were kept or, or brought to hourly.
Yes.
And then told that they had a limit or were not allowed to have overtime by the commissioners to, to prevent them from.
Getting a ten to twelve thousand dollar increase, they were switched to hourly. With overtime.
EMA and a couple of. Uh, EMA and the matron are allowed to do overtime. The others are hourly, not allowed to do overtime.
EMA had a limit.
Right.
The overtime.
I thought the matron was limited to. And then EMA was up to five per week, but could be, could ask for more.
And it'll be actually up to five straight time.
Alright, here's, here's my motion, um.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Justin.
Alright, I don't need to jump in. I, I don't know where this stands right now. I gotta, so Barnes and Thornburg puts out. Actually, you sent me the same link that I got. So Barnes and Thornburg puts out. Updates if legal, legal requirements change for cities and counties. Uh, last Friday, the Eastern District of Texas put a nationwide ban on the implementation of this FLSA. Wage increase that goes up to fifty-eight thousand. Part of that ban, uh. They implemented a reversion where it basically said instead of staying at the current rate, where you've been jumping up to fifty-eight thousand dollars. You should revert back down to that thirty-five thousand dollar rate, saying the Department of Labor overstepped their authority by, um. Using only, I think, the wage test as opposed to the duties and wage test. So as of right now. Of course, this is just, again, it was in the Eastern Dec- uh, District of Texas. They said that it was not constitutional that they did that. I imagine this is gonna go up on appeal. That was just last Friday and Barnes and Thornburg just put out a di- a disclaimer about it today, so. If, if you pass this, it doesn't mean that you can't revisit it before January one, but I imagine this goes up on appeal. If, if you pass this, it doesn't mean that you can't revisit it before January one, but I imagine this goes up on appeal. I don't know what that looks like. But as of right now, there is a nationwide ban order. To stop the implementation of this increased salary test.
So there is a nationwide ban, so it's.
Which it's only costing us the two employees major leave.
Yes, so it only, yes. That was, yeah, I just emailed.
But it gives E M A the opportunity to make more, which she should if she's booking more hours, and also the nurse. You know, I mean, gosh, I mean.
Well, how, how does that work so if like? She might as not call like that. When they get, they get, is, is there a count on hours? Or what? I mean, we just get paid their overtime.
They've improved, uh, proved them up right now, but the commissioners can approve more. Like if there's a big, uh. Blood or something like that, she has more hours. They left that open when they voted today.
Yes.
On, on their approval.
And the past has always been no overtime, so they kind of tweaked it a little bit.
Well, you have to, because that's all the larger stuff.
The E M A director is seventy seven thousand.
No, no.
E M S, I believe you're looking at.
Yeah. She, that is like twenty three.
Okay, that would be, was, was the. The E M A director is forty four, nine forty four. So that one didn't go up.
No, that one they did not increase. It changed.
The department had rules, because you had.
Maybe they'll still say that basically hourly, hourly hours, twenty three thousand.
Hourly at thirty, so that's the thirty.
Said difficult races, because it was at fifty three.
So, since none of these people left officially, we can pay them sorry or any kind of one. Right? Yes, yeah, I would expect the Department of Labor to appeal it. And again, I don't know what that looks like in that circuit, but.
So if it's in, so there's probably a stay on it now.
There is a stay on now.
That's what I'm saying, why would you?
And it'll get appealed, and then at the end of January, they'll dismiss the appeal, right? The Department of Labor.
Not sure what circuit that is, Texas, if that's.
After Trump's sworn in, I think the Department of Labor is gonna continue to pursue that appeal. I, that's what I wish. My money's on it being dismissed.
Previously, has it been approved in December?
We can, we can approve. We can prove the salary ordinance as is. Without the amount raised up for those two positions. Until we know what's going on. Like a court.
Let's do that.
So. So I, I will make the motion that we approve the salary orders as is. Which that would take out. Well, it doesn't matter, because it's not, it's not, it's not even entered.
Right, this is the.
This is the three percent.
This morning, yes, this is three percent.
I, I will make the motion that we approve the two thousand twenty five salary ordinance as presented to us. Based off of the three percent increase in salary per year. Yeah, that's my motion.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion?
Tell me you need to speak up to studio.
Cassandra?
I have a question about, um. And hopefully it's not a long answer, but the longevity of designations, how do, how did the various folks qualify for that?
So I believe it was originally set at, um, after five years of service, you get a five hundred dollar. Um, stipend added to that ordinance, and it goes up in an increase of five years.
Okay.
As five hundred dollars every five years.
So is there a reason why the Commissioner Board President is getting a longevity? Allocation of five hundred dollars? Um, when he's only been in.
He was only on the council for ten years.
He worked at the jail. He had several.
Continue, but I believe with the.
Wait a minute, I, I had four years in the surveyor's office. She had over ten years.
No, but I think he had some continued.
I thought from the. Going from a council member to a commissioner, it was all continued.
Yeah, but, but, but he was, okay, so that would be, that would be the five.
Yeah.
Oh, I can check that.
He was on council for a few years.
All right, and now we have a year and a half.
He was a manager before that, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was commissioner.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, so I was right. That's why, because he got beat and then he went to.
As long as he squares with the rules, I just wanna make sure, because I'm like, wait, manage?
Yes. I do have a lot of employees that'll email me, I hit five years this year, but it's always that. Following sound, like the sixth year is when that starts.
Pays out, because this would be my fifth year.
Yes, you, so.
Yeah.
And that's what he served before the Civil War, like I did.
Official one to sign, because I have one stapled, and then the rest were like paper clips.
We all sign, we all sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, what, does that satisfy your discussion, Cassandra?
Yes.
Oh, but we need a vote, because.
Uh, no, I said, I had to, I had to make sure discussion was over. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Please sign on the left side. Here and I, sorry.
And there may need to be a revisit by. Fifty thirty, well, a revisit, like if that. Appeals and changes, and I do have to do this, I have to keep an eye on.
tend to agree with Cassandra, though, on the Department of Labor, changes leadership, they're probably going to not. Into the prosecution of the.
But you're saying it won't happen then? That's probably us.
Okay.
Hey, is that the total of what you have then?
Yeah.
Okay, instead of going along, I'm asking one. False week, is there anything else?
I've got several things.
Oh.
One thing is. A hearing next month for next era. Um. Regardless of what commissioners do. The planning commission has forty five days. To get it to them, that will be next year. So we could have, we're gonna have one new commissioner, so I don't know, we're having a public hearing. On an E R A, when we don't even know if there's gonna be battery storage for next era. That's my thoughts. I don't know if we, it's never been advertised.
Yes, it has.
For next era? No, it hasn't.
Oh, for next.
No.
For a hearing?
I'm talking about the one in December. That's never been advertised.
Well, it's supposed to be in the paper they sent me to publication.
So.
It's, I mean, it's supposed to be in this Thursday paper.
We can, we can have it if you wanna have it, but. I'll tell you right now.
I don't wanna waste.
I'm not, I'm not voting for it, because we don't know what's gonna happen. It's a waste of, it's a waste of money. Even do it. Until we don't. So, with, with that being said. If, if I can, Justin. I wanna make a motion that we cancel the public hearing for next era. Until we know what the final outcome is. Of the planning commission, the commission decision. My motion.
I'll second you.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
I don't know about that. There's some legal parts of it. Is that something we can do, things like that? It's okay?
Well, so if you're gonna reschedule, if you're not saying you're just canceling the public hearing, you just reschedule it, you're telling them the first of the year?
Okay.
I don't see that thing.
Well, I say, yes, I just wanted to make sure of what I'm saying.
Post him to stop me if I did something stupid.
I don't know.
Is that, is that?
A lot of stupid stuff over the years, apparently.
Right. Is that an aye? All in favor?
Okay. The next thing I wanna talk about is. I wanna talk about. I wanna talk about county behavior, okay? So I was accused by some, somebody anonymous of calling somebody a dick in a commissioner's meeting. Well, two things. One, whoever put that, who doesn't have enough guts to say who they were. And second. They never heard me say anybody's name, and third, they were not where I was at. And when I realized my mic was hot after I was talking to somebody. Mark Goldie came on, said, you got something to say? I noticed my mic was hot, and I said to him, if I had something to say, I'll say it. And I had nothing to say, so. While we're talking about that. Let's talk about conduct. We were all. Accosted up here by a county commissioner. That told me, if I voted for him. I would never be elected to the council. Well, everybody here knows that that didn't happen. And second of all. That county commissioner and his family were inspectors. At a polling place. When I was threatened to vote by him. That they would, I would not get elected. So there is the biggest impropriety I've ever seen in my life. And we're worried about somebody saying dick. Well. So that's all I got to say about that.
Would you like to continue with a motion, uh, the chair? Most of them, but also something? Oh, sorry, I, I, nobody raised their hand earlier, sorry.
I want, I want to. Circle back to the low boy, and I don't wanna advocate for.
You have one for sale?
Huh? No, you don't wanna advocate for spending money. But something to keep in mind. If there were some sort of emergency where large witness was needed in the county, there is an advantage that us having access to our own low boy. And not having to rely on the county. They kind of, that self sufficiency could greatly purchase response time. Something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
But we'll still have our own boy, low boy in the case of emergency.
That's a good idea. Well, I think, yeah, I think you're saying we should, you're saying we should have one, is what you're saying, right?
Yes, and, and we have. A reliable.
We. Yeah.
Bad shape, but. Maybe somebody can repair it better, I don't know.
So, uh, I'm. This comment is just piggybacking off of his, um, a thought that I had that you guys, uh, raised, kind of was. Wouldn't we even have needed that? New low boy if, if you get rid of the pug mixer and stuff like that, we're saying that there.
That was roller.
That was the roller, not a low boy.
And, and the low boy too, but he has a good point.
But, um, so, back to the, the ten, the ten year role plan. Um. If we're not gonna be able to meet that ten year plan, are you guys going to?
Revise it?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's five year on I TAP, they, they have a technical social program.
Yeah, it is five, but you're right.
Can be looked at by anybody's public, public information.
Yeah, and, and I, my understanding, I think we were. In order to reach our goal, it was what, like, what, fifty, six, or something like that?
It was a lot.
Miles per year, um. So that's, that's, yeah, that's my concern is like. If we've only gotten what time.
Of course, it's not all paved against gravel, right? Chip seal.
Can I make a comment? I, I kinda opened that can of worms. Because. We were told there'll be no more pug mix. And start counting. I realize there were problems out there, or perceived problem. Those can be rectified, but we sit out here as a council, and we appropriate so much money to do. So many miles of road, and then to just add, and I don't know if it was all the commissioners, I only heard one. Make a decree that we're not using any pug mix anymore. That is not a one man decision. And if we're the financial body of this county. We need to spend our money as wisely as possible. Todd made the comment. That a low volume road like that, that, that hot mix is not gonna last any longer. Than the public, and we know, because we've been there.
Well, I, I guess as, as a concerned taxpaying citizen, um. If there was no motion made, you know, by the commissioner, what, what, what would be the next steps for us? Because. Um, going to the commissioners and sitting in front of the. President of the commissioners who made the sole decision, you know, is kind of, you're kind of.
I have no idea.
Expecting him to.
It's hard to guess, that they may have thought that we were in support of that too, with all the. Concern. About oil and everything.
But they, but they never came those ones.
Normally, it would be the commissioner, it's over, I have to, sorry, but.
But then again, that's, you know, what happens when assumptions, you get a.
The only, the only one played word foul, then it is because now we're talking money.
Yeah, and, but, I mean, I was just looking, maybe for some directions. From, from you, I see you guys complain, he's in the right direction, because I'm, I can't sit in front of commissioners, I don't make the. And fight about him too himself, because he's just gonna have, have me escorted out, so what would be our next?
I, I think, actually, I think Rachel agreed too, that she bought to do more pub. I mean, I. I don't, I don't know that we received that negatively.
But then, when the new commission takes on in January, that's a decision that's not, that's based. And we've already appropriated the funds, it would be, it would be to our best interest. If they would, uh, figure out how to use it.
Because I know why they're feeling, right? It was an anger.
He's the public, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's where the pub, right? Do what we need to do to contain versus just stop thinking. Machines don't stop thinking anymore.
That's more than.
They were going over Osso County and.
You said there was thirty eight inches of. One still there. Sorry, somebody did.
Don't ask her anything.
They need to contain this area more of this, with when we, what designs in that building or something.
When, when I was there, the pub was right where it is now. That was. Dave, I wanna ask a question when it gets around me, but I don't wanna interrupt you, but there's a situation.
I, I think I would agree with whoever said it here, that the new commission will be the one that decides it, but thank you for the input, so.
So I'm straight on this. Todd, you can probably, we're, they're gonna go, they're gonna quit all plug, and they're gonna go to hot mix.
That's what.
Okay.
So far, so far, that's.
So far.
They finished what they had left, right?
Do we know with, with the, with the pug mix? How they're doing it right now? How many miles of road do we average take care of and pave a year?
About, except about fifteen with plug. Right, is that right? That's close.
It's right in there, yeah.
And with asphalt, you're gonna do for maybe.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna drop it about two thirds.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what, and how much is our cost gonna go up by dropping it two thirds?
Same cost, it'd be cost driven. So instead of doing fifteen miles, you might do four.
They can do a third of it. For the same money.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to make sure I was clear on. And that that decision was made by one person? Nobody seems to know.
It's just being asked by Councilman Black, the day that, uh, Commissioner Cheswick and I went out to the highway department. Um, to take a look at the alleged spill. Uh. Commissioner Binkley arrived first. And there was a, some words exchanged, and then eventually, uh, Councilman Black and Tori Chesser arrived. On scene, and, and Commissioner, or Councilman Black was just asking me, he thought he had. When Binkley had said something about, we're gonna stop.
We're gonna stop pushing, oh, and I'm like, what?
He said that then, and he thought he remembered me saying, yeah, that's right. Well, I'll tell you, I have no recollection of that, and I knew nothing.
Well, Don, Don said, and this is, I'm telling you what I heard, now, I'm not saying what you, maybe you just didn't realize what you're saying. He said, we're not gonna use it no more. And council's gonna fund it, because I said, you're gonna stop making plug, you know that the cost difference is crazy. He's like, well, we're gonna stop doing it because of this mess. And he says, ain't that right? And she, the council's gonna take care of it, and she says, yeah, and that's, and I was like, oh my god.
All I remember him doing that day is yelling in my face, and I had to stop that.
I talked to you before, I wasn't trying to, that's why I was asking, that's why. Because when you said it, or I'm thinking, council's gonna do that.
No, there was never.
Yeah.
I must not have, there is never any conversation. You know, when I. Rachel said a few things, and then Donny showed up, he was mostly just hooting and hopping.
If we could afford it, I'd dispute, right? I'd like to say so.
I, I really honestly believe we're, we're very fortunate to have Rachel out of the highway. I really do, and she got, she gets caught in between a lot of different things. And I think the plug, the hot mix thing has, has thrown her into a tizzy. Uh, I think some of this equipment that she's asking for, we truly do need. But not if we're only gonna do four miles versus fifteen miles, and, uh, so I, I think we need to be careful not to pick on Rachel too much. I, my opinion.
Yeah, I wasn't picking on her.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying.
I was picking.
I will say, as far as low boy goes, that thing is not just for paving, that thing's a workhorse. If I have a truck go down.
Mowers or whatever, anything.
About with that or motor, you know.
So do you have a truck that can handle a new low boy? The way, that it needs to be, the hydraulic capacities and so on, so on?
We use the low boy a lot more than just the paving.
Because you have a detachable, I'm, now, and you're gonna want a new detachable, and it will be a heavier unit than what you have now. And so my question is, do we have a tractor out there sufficient?
I have two tractors set up right now that can handle two, well, either.
Hey, it's been a long, okay?
Someone brought up. Like, I mean, if there was a solar painter due.
Someone brought up, to my agreement, that there was a solar thing to do.
We're expecting one before the end of the year from Mammoth.
Who's that supposed to be from and how much?
Um, it's supposed to be from Mammoth, and I think it's seventy five thousand. We're gonna check on it.
What is the due date?
Uh, they said they were gonna do it by the end of the year, maybe they're waiting on us for some reason, we'll, we'll check on it, but.
What's the deadline date in the contract?
Um.
I'm not so concerned about when they say.
The front loading on the EDA starts, it is based on, uh, um. Based on the production of electricity, which doesn't start until twenty five. Um, I don't think that's, um, that's more like a good base than payment.
I just have one more thing, I, uh, I had posted this on Facebook today, that as I was reviewing the EDAs, and we'll be covering this a lot more tomorrow. There's a provision in the proposed EDA and in the older existing EDAs. That the council will publicly support solar projects, and I have asked that that provision be removed. So, I'm not going to have my ability to advocate either way hindered by. Some boilerplate language in their proposed contract.
And that would be my question, is how many, how many representatives have already signed, basically signed away their. Right to represent the public over representing the corporation.
I didn't see Cassandra post.
Well, if they're, if they're in two media.
If there's a clause in EDA, it's like number four, right? Is that what it is?
Um, I have it.
I think it's four.
So how, how many of our commissioners, how many of our council members have already signed this contract?
It's like, pointing to the solar panels.
Basically, it, it, that, that, that clause is prohibiting elected representatives from actually representing. Their constituents, now that, now they have to say nothing but good about solar.
Can you read it?
Yeah. Fancy language, here we go, the governing body here, the govern, it's, it's number two, Todd, and it's actions by the counties. And it's the governing bodies hereby covenant, covenant to use the EDP, EDP received from developers. For proper governmental purposes in, in accordance with Indiana law. The governing bodies hereby agree, subject to the terms and conditions contained in this agreement. That express publicly their support for the construction, operating, and operation of the project by the developer within the county. Government bodies shall support the project in order to evacuate the terms of this agreement into otherwise facilitated investment by the project and, and the county. Now, that's legal language, I stuck that sucker in, and basically, what it, what it comes out as. Is that it is absolutely limiting your ability, if, let's say, for example, the road issues. That were taking place by next era, could this be what also hindered why anytime the count? Anybody in the county said, what's going on with the roads, the response was always, well, we're working with them, because. Legally, based on the EDP that was signed, you guys wouldn't have been allowed to sit up there and say.
By signing it, though, we're supporting it. I, I believe, but, but can we, can we? I'm saying, I am interpreting as by signing it, that I'm agreeing that I'm supporting it.
You were entering, you, on behalf of the county, you were entering into this agreement. But you weren't, if, if that provision wasn't in there, you wouldn't be also bound. To publicly support them and not criticize things that were happening, or not, you know, not make. Wrongdoings or questionable practices known to the public, so with that provision in there. You are, they were wanting you, they're asking that we all be required to shut up and let them screw everyone.
They can take that clause out, because I'm not signing with that.
Well, I will tell you, all the complaining that I brought to them, they never called me on it, so I mean, they let me say it, they let me say it. I said it on the meetings.
I've never heard anybody say any one negative thing publicly, and I mean, there is plenty of issues. Going on that could be addressed and say, and, and admitted, yeah, these were mistakes made, but we've never heard. Anybody saying mistakes were made, we could have done this better, we could have done that, it's all we ever hear is money, 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 money.
There is, I have said, Justin, that there are mistakes made. The public hearings for the original thing, they were held, and that, and nobody thought solar was ever gonna happen, so nobody went. And now it's like.
But, and, and. I've honestly, I've signed it, but I do want to tell you, Justin. I differ with you a little bit on that, because the other night, when, when we said, I said it's a. Plan commission person representing this board. I made the motion to propose more for him. Because I want things right.
I'd be careful if I was him. That have already been signed, you hold everybody that's signed to that.
And I've never said I was pro-solar, I've always said I was still.
No, I understand, but, but, but to my point, that, that clause, to Cassie's point, that clause. Does hinder each and every representative's ability to properly represent their constituents.
Contexts should have, uh, you know, at a position, like, what are they gonna do to us, though? It doesn't say it anywhere, what do they do then? Sue us?
Yeah.
You know, and then, what will they sue her for? And then what, they stop the solar project, I guess, right?
Well, what I'll say is to Justin's point, you know, removing or modifying the clause requiring public support. Which, really, that clause runs contrary to the very spirit of our representative government.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem if they removed that out of that one, I'm not a.
Voice real quick, is that it sounds, well, it did, I found that out this morning in the mission, the EDAs changed. So we were given ten days, because I've known this on the original EDA, I can see if there was a typo or something simple.
A script in there, that's different.
Right, something like that, it sounds like the new EDA, which was not what was published in the paper, that I'm just now getting my hands on. I'm not gonna have ten days to review that.
You, you mean, but the part about more money?
More money and.
This paragraph, and there are actually other things that I brought to Justin's attention about venue.
That, from everything that I can tell, we should have a new public hearing on the new EDA, because. The purpose of a public hearing is to give a ten day.
Just because this has been so long, I, I'm gonna give my opinion then, I represent several townships. I'm not just gonna base that on you, regarding no, no disrespect, but I mean, I'd like to hear from the other thousands of people. Which they have the opportunity to bring that up tomorrow night, so like, we have a whole, that was the reason why you wanted to do it, to make this meeting shorter.
So much for that.
The only reason I, the only thing I say about that, okay, I mean, I'm. I was supportive of the EDA versus the tax payment, okay, I said, hey, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, eh, but the only thing is. Our executive session was cut so short.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we had like no time to like even do anything, and that's our fault for making it at that time. Because we had, we read fifteen minutes of the commissioners, and we, it was just like.
It was insufficient time to gain the information we were hoping to get.
I thought by Kay bringing Connie, that Connie shined light on several things.
But, she was only here, and then we had no chance, no chance to even talk to Nick or anybody, or, because if it was just like shoved out the door, you guys gotta go. And we'll just vote on it, because.
Well, they said we can move.
Yeah.
I true, I'm gonna hear from that gal that we have.
The EDAs, the EDAs. Do have to be, for us to agree, and they have to be in the best interest for the county. In our opinion, our opinions may differ, that's why there's seven people on the board. You understand, you know, my point is, what, what, what they tell me might be, might be representing them in the best way. I may, I may flat completely a hundred percent disagree with them, and I will tell you, as, as a constituent, if I feel I need to disagree with them. I will. And I'm, and I worry about the consequence of it.
You know, to, to Dave's point, I have not had, I have not one, I have not had one person contact me and tell me. Well, you better approve that EDA or that ERA, I have not had one person. Call, my phone number's on the county website, my email is, there has not been one person that has contacted me.
You mean taxpayer?
None.
You mean, you're not a taxpayer?
Yeah, yeah, nobody, zero. I mean, you're talking about two townships, I'm talking about the whole county, there hasn't been one person. And when, when. I'm not basing my decision off of, nobody called me or, or that.
We did not make any, any agreements on the, on, when we were, we were trying to negotiate a better deal for the county with them.
We couldn't, we couldn't.
Make a deal, and we did not make a deal, but, but we didn't agree to any of that, at that meeting.
And, and when we're talking about agreements, I wonder how, how all of a sudden next era said, well, we're gonna give you. Two hundred thousand dollars more in that latest EDA for the fire departments, where did that come from?
The planning commission, because Todd, Jack.
That's not quite, that's not quite, that's not quite true, I don't think.
I, I have a question.
I think there's more to it.
Todd did ask for that for a long time before that, I, I think.
I think he was asking for, if that's emergency, emergency vehicles, get in there and get.
They were asking for the money upfront, and there, it's at the money at the end, so you leave one fence pole stop for twenty years and the job's never completed, they never get their money. But it doesn't matter.
Station's tomorrow.
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
Seconds, I'll tell you, all those in favor, aye?